Ladies and gentlemen, it's eight thirty. We're going to convene the meeting of the Brookings County Commission. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time in our meetings, we always have an opportunity for a citizen that would like to schedule time on a commission agenda for an item that's not listed and schedule an action item or have a comment. Is there anyone in the audience? If not, at this time, I'd like to call it executive privilege if you'd like, but in all of the years that I've served on this board, this is the first commission meeting she's attended and it's our last. And as you go through over forty years of public life and serving boards and commissions, state, national, and local, you've got to have the support at home and she's been the anchor in our family for all of those years. And so I'd like to introduce you to my wife Sharon. Through all the tears and laughter, we still go through the world hand in hand. Thank you, dear. I love you. Dennis?
And I'd like to take this opportunity also, it's been twelve years and Judy said this is the first meeting that she's attended and she's got to leave at nine o'clock for another appointment, but there have been a lot of nights that she had to keep the home front going when I was gone to meetings. I can't count how many nights that would be, so she stuck with me and took care of everybody and took care of things around the home. And again, after some meetings, we talked about a lot of different things that happened and always very supportive. And thank you, Judy, for the time and spent a good run of twelve years. Thank you for being with us.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair would like to have a moment.
Yes, sir.
I would like to turn this portion over to the third longest-serving Commissioner, Stephanie Miller.
In light of the fact that our two longtime commissioners decided they did not want to have a party or any big hoopla, I decided the least they deserve the clocks that we all get when we retire from here and being they don't want them and their lovely wives are sitting in our audience, I'm going to present these to you, four Commissioners Falcon and Larson. And they deserve these. They have worked hard. They've been dedicated county employees who care about what happens in Brookings County. So, thank you.
And I guess my only comment is why do I need a clock? I really don't care what time it is anymore.
Thank you very much. Thank you kindly. Appreciate the comments and it went to two well-deserving people. One thing about Dennis and I, you won't see us at any committee meetings or events anymore. Dennis is going on a little sashay, leaving tomorrow morning. He's gone. And I'm heading to the frozen tundra and you'll probably see me if it thaws out someday, but it won't be around here. Okay, moving on forward with the serious business that we have is the approval of the agenda. And I think there isn't a correction that we need on the agenda.
We do need to add an executive session for contractual and legal as well as personnel at the end of the meeting.
That could be called the eleven A.
Yes. And then we also need to remove item E under regular business as well.
Which one?
Item E.
Okay, are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda? Then we'll approve the agenda without objection. Our consent agenda items, ladies and gentlemen, are the minutes, the travel education, approval of personnel action notice, cellular allowances, and approval of a human services report, which are all in our packet. And unless there are any corrections or additions, without objection, we'll approve the consent agenda and we'll go on to our routine business. First item of routine business under A is the approval of the claims. The chair would entertain a motion for such.
Move to approve.
Moved by Miller, second by Krogman. Any comments, discussions? Staff have any clarifications on any of their claims that they'd like to bring forward? We do have the correction that was given to us this morning. It would be that noted. The mini haha JDC bill was incorrect and that's been corrected. No other questions, comments? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Wysef?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Department head reports. Down the other end, Mr. Hill.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to start off by, on behalf of my department and myself and my employees, to thank Commissioner Larson and Falcon for their assistance during my personal fifteen years and my staff's various times. And that includes as department head and even when I was a part-time employee many, many years ago, still a college student. So, I really do appreciate that. Most of my stuff's going to be done at the next meeting, but we do have, at the December sixth meeting, I brought before you guys, a City of Brookings Sustainability Council sent a request for a liaison out of my office and I had emailed some information to you and would now be appropriate time to discuss that.
We're discussing a appointment or the possibility of an appointment. I guess if you have some particular comments or concerns, it would be appropriate for you to bring them forward to us at this point.
Well, the main comments are there's no other small-town communities represented on the Sustainability Council for the City of Brookings. And the letter that requested refers to a planning background for the person that they requested, but there's also no city planning personnel on the Sustainability Council. So, you know, it's a city council, it's not a county council. To me, it looks like it should represent the whole county, if it's going to be county representation, if we're going to be representing the county. You know, I'm uncomfortable with a staff member being on a council and there's no other, you know, they're going to take our comments and think that it's countywide when I cannot make that assurance as department head.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess my thought on that, probably at this particular time, I don't think it's appropriate that we would have a planning staff on that if the city doesn't have a planning staff on that. And even though they put the request out, I think at this time, I would defer to adding anybody to that, but I guess that decision can be made after the first of the year if there's a decision to change that. But I guess at this time, I wouldn't be supportive of putting staff on.
I'm wondering if maybe we, I noted in your notes to us in our packet that one of your ideas was possibly putting a commissioner on there. And so maybe we should bring that up again at the beginning of the year when we have the new commissioners on and see what their thoughts are with us. I think we should discuss it further at that time. And I think that we should just table that for the time being.
Well, thank you for your comments. It doesn't necessarily need a table for my, I just wanted to make sure I was directed to come back to you with the information and I wanted to make sure I'm on the right track, giving you enough information so we can keep the ball going. So, I will be more than happy to bring it back up at another time.
And maybe put that in our packets again when we have the new commissioners and to talk about it again.
I'll make, thank you. And January twenty-first is Brookings Day at the Capitol. And I'm on a transportation committee through the county, a city transportation committee. And I need guidance from the county commission on whether, I mean, the transportation committee, it's a temporary committee for the City of Brookings. We make recommendations and I don't know if it's going to do us any good enough for our transportation committee to meet with the Secretary of Transportation in Pierre or not because the work we do here in Brookings, I hate to, I don't know the tactful way of saying it.
What you're asking, you're asking permission to go?
Well, no, I'm asking, do I need to go, I guess is my, the way I'm phrasing it.
Well, I serve on Government Affairs Committee and we're the ones that arrange the Brookings Day. And I think Bob would gain, it'd be good to have a staffer go along on the bus to the Brookings Day. And after all, we are a member of the chamber and have our staffer participate. There'll probably be some other commissioners. Ryan, I'm sure you've probably got it on your schedule. I don't know if any of the other commissioners are going, but it's good to have the county represented, especially with transportation issues in Brookings right now.
It's a brutal day.
Yes. I'll be out in Pierre several times during that timeframe. And other than that, everything else I've got can wait until January sixth meeting.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate the work.
Did you want to mention anything from our meeting, our afternoon meeting with Todd Case and Luke? I mean, anything in particular?
We did have a meeting, a scheduled zoning meeting where we reviewed the update of the upcoming zoning ordinance. And at the January sixth planning and zoning meeting, we have got a public hearing on a zoning ordinance change. And the Planning Commission's going to hear it. Todd Case from First Planning District, he's working on some changes to our zoning ordinance to, basically our zoning ordinance was, it's almost one of a kind for the First Planning District. So, and it's being reviewed by different people in different ways. So, basically, the bottom line, we are trying to bring it in line with the other counties in the First Planning District. There's four or five different planning districts in South Dakota. And of course, we've got the South Dakota codified laws. And so, we had a planning meeting. We discussed all the changes that we're going to recommend. It's going to come to the zoning board on January sixth. And then after that, if the zoning board approves it, we're going to submit it to the county commission for some updates. This will be, now, I hate to use the word emergency update, but it's just a normal update, but it's not the update that we're looking for from the comprehensive plan. That's what I've got to, I've got to keep the county commission aware. It is going to be a zoning ordinance update. And you're going to see these periodically up until the time the comprehensive plan is done. When we catch something that refill is vital enough to change, we're going to go ahead and go through the process and change it.
Okay.
Does that suffice?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good day. Joyce from Equalization, good morning.
Good morning to all of you. And on behalf of the Equalization Office, I would also like to extend my deepest thanks and gratitude to Commissioner Larson and Falcon for the years of working with you and learning from you. So, thank you very much for the work you've done for the citizens of Brookings County. It is appreciated.
Thank you.
Short and sweet from Equalization, by January one, our office is required to have our intentions sent out to Department of Revenue. And by intentions, it includes what we are going to be changing in assessments for the 2015 assessment year. So, Pierre needs to know the areas that are going to increase or decrease. And this is done by studying all of the 2014 sales, beginning with November first of 2013, ending on October thirty-first of 2014. When we went into the 2014 year, our intentions indicated we were hoping for ninety-one percent median. And the median is the middle number, so that means half of our sales would be over ninety-one, half under. When we ended 2014 sales, we are at eighty-seven. So, it indicates that the market has increased and we will be increasing valuations for 2015 in certain areas. So, this plan has been submitted to Department of Revenue. It's been submitted to Stacy and Stacy will be sending it on to the commission for your review. And then following your review, I will meet with you the end of January at the meeting and we will go over it in more detail. Prior to that, I would invite any of you that have been through this before or to the new commissioners that have not been through this before to come to my office if you have any questions or concerns. I didn't give you the detailed spreadsheets and the detailed Word documents. You have the brief synopsis, which is simply put, if you want more data and more details, please come to the office or I can send them to you. So, just let me know. But I will see you at the end of January in more detail. So, any questions with that? Okay, we're right on target. All the paperwork, building permits and everything have been completed by the appraisers. And so, this is a busy time of year for changing values. And this, 2015 is green sheets in our cards. And so, there's green paper all over the office. So, we're busy. So, thank you.
Thank you for the good work. Vicki from Finance Office, good morning.
Yeah, I just want to thank on behalf of the Finance Office, both Dennis and Don, for all their years of service and for all the help they've been to us. And we really appreciate all your work you've done. We do, we will miss you. To kind of give you an update on our office, we still have not received notification from Pierre that our levies are approved. They are slowly starting to come out. I know that there's a couple counties around us that have gotten notice, Lake County and Moody County. But there's Hamlin County, Dual County, all the ones up north have not received notice, just like we have. We've been in contact with them yesterday, so I'm hoping we're getting closer. So, instead of being out the second of January, it'll probably be the next week, but we'll still be really close to getting it out. But we just have to wait for that approval before we can do anything. So, we're waiting for that and just doing end-of-the-year things to prepare for the coming year. Any questions? Anybody has? Thanks.
Oh, thanks, Vicki. Sheriff Stanway, good morning.
Just to give you an update in the jail, we have twenty inmates, fifty-eight on total participants on the twenty-four-seven program, have twenty-four coming in twice a day. I have twenty-four on the scram that come in once a week. And I have ten that are doing tests in other counties. Other than that, we had a little busy holiday at an emergency committal on Christmas Eve that we had to get to Yankton and stuff and some other domestic stuff, but otherwise it went pretty smooth. There's always, seems like at Christmas time brings out some domestic issues and things and child custody and that type of stuff. Other than that, I just want to thank Commissioner Falcon and Commissioner Larson for the, you know, it was kind of just a little tidbit here, you know, I worked for Dennis for sixteen years under police chief and I thought, oh, my gosh, I got elected sheriff. I don't have to work for this guy anymore. And then he comes back in another sixteen years with the county commission. He's been my liaison for sixteen years and he's been easy to work with and stuff. There's one thing about, sometimes other sheriffs will say, well, you got it made. You got a law enforcement officer that's on the commission and you get about everything you want. And I go, no. I have to really prove that I needed the position or needed the structure and stuff, so I couldn't buffalo him and stuff. And Donna, you've been good too and appreciate the cooperation. The commission has always been good to the sheriff's office and I think we've got a good working relationship. I know other sheriffs are jealous of me of the working relationship I have with the commission. I hear horror stories with other sheriffs and stuff with their commission. They're at odds all the time. And I don't think we've ever had that issue since I've been sheriff, that we didn't work out. We may not always agree, but at the end of the day, we still shook hands and walked out the door. So...
And that's the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah, absolutely.
You have that open debate. I think the interesting thing, Marty, and you just mentioned it, that over the holidays, you have a mental health issue. And you and I and a few others for the last ten, twelve years have said, the coming issue in our society is the mental health of our general population. And really, nobody wanted to listen to us.
No.
And now it's on the media all the time. So, at least we had some foresight, but had to get bad before anybody wanted to take action. So, I appreciate your proactive approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marty, thank you for your comments and just go back. I mean, it's been years. This young guy used to come and ride with me when he was back from Minneapolis looking to get in law enforcement. I said, hang in there, Marty. You'll get in there. Hang in there. And he got on and we worked together for sixteen years before he...
Yeah. Well, actually Dennis helped me get on to the police department because back then the logic was that we didn't hire, they didn't like to hire guys that weren't married and stuff.
There was a lot of things.
There was a lot of things. But Dennis says, he's okay. He's okay. Just because he's not married, he's okay. So, thank you.
Well, thanks, Marty. You've been an important cog in our wheel of the team. Dick, Mr. Burke from Highway Department, no paperwork, short report.
Well, I've got stuff later on in the agenda, so I'll wait with a lot of that when that comes due. The main thing I have, if you've been getting any comments at all, we've had a really difficult time this year and we're not alone. Everybody seems to be having the same problem, getting salt. So, with the ice storms we've had and whatever, it's getting extremely difficult to give a level of service like some people would like. And we're trying to address the worst of the worst. But just in case you get any comments, you know, we've gotten an average of about one load a month and usually you should be able to get them within the week or definitely the following week when you order them. So, we're working on it. It's getting built up now. And we also borrowed a semi-load from the state, which really helped enormously, or we would have been out that last ice storm. And then, other than that, I'm the new guy on the block. But Dennis and Don, you've been very helpful for me and I appreciate getting a chance to be in your organization. And I hope to see you in the future and be sure to say hi and keep the good word going. So, thank you.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Oh, Dick, did, excuse me, did you get a chance to look into those, I called you about those rumble strips or whatever?
I seen another article, but I would have to contact that person on the Safety Committee and I'll certainly do that. But yeah, that's definitely a possibility for that eleven over by Sinai.
Yeah. The ninety percent funding by somebody else got my attention.
Right. And it's, like I say, not many people apply for it. So, it's possible if there's funds available, it'll be a good opportunity. So...
Thanks, Dick. Okay, we move on to the Finance Office report. We have the be it noted items, the auditor's account with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, and the highway expenditure report, which all were in our packet. Any comments or questions from Commissioners or staff? Also be it noted, our register of deeds statement of fees collected is in the packet. Is there any comments or questions on that report? Our next item is a scheduled item at nine o'clock. We've got a little bit of time yet, so let's kind of skip down to regular business. I think we've got a couple, three things that won't take very long. First of all, with item A, some board appointments. First appointment would be Mr. Boer to the Brookings Health System Board of Trustees. The chair would entertain a motion moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Oh, I guess we've got to call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysef?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number two is approving Mr. Spence Terrell, representing District One and Daryl Kleinjohn, or District Three, Daryl Kleinjohn, representing District One to the Planning and Zoning Board. Chair would entertain a motion. Moved by Krogman, second by Miller. Please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysef?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number two is approving Mr. Spence Terrell, representing District One and Daryl Kleinjohn, or District Three, Daryl Kleinjohn, representing District One to the Planning and Zoning Board. Chair would entertain a motion moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Oh, I guess we've got to call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysef?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number two is approving Mr. Spence Terrell, representing District One and Daryl Kleinjohn, or District Three, Daryl Kleinjohn, representing District One to the Planning and Zoning Board. Chair would entertain a motion moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysef?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number two is approving Mr. Spence Terrell, representing District One and Daryl Kleinjohn, or District Three, Daryl Kleinjohn, representing District One to the Planning and Zoning Board. Chair would entertain a motion moved by Krogman, second by Miller. Please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysef?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I did contact Mr. Jones from that area and I just want to thank him for serving, if he's watching. He and I disagreed by more than anybody, but it's great to have disagreement because it makes you think. And he was a really good board member and he sided against it. I guess he didn't... Our next item is a scheduled item at nine o'clock. We've got a little bit of time yet, so let's kind of skip down to regular business. I think we've got a couple, three things that won't take very long. First of all, was Item A, some Board Appointments. First appointment would be Mr. Boer to the Brookings Health System Board of Trustees. The Chair would entertain a motion moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Oh, I guess we got to call a roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Number two is approving Mr. Spence Terrell, representing District One and Daryl Kleinjohn, or District Three, Daryl Kleinjohn, representing District One, to the Planning and Zoning Board. Chair would entertain a motion.
Move.
Moved by Krogman, second by Miller. Please call a roll.
Miller. Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I did contact Mr. Jones from that area, and I just want to thank him for serving, if he's watching. He and I disagreed by more than anybody, but it's great to have disagreement because it makes you think. And he was a really good board member, and he sided against it, I guess. He didn't, he's, obviously didn't turn it, yeah. So, I knew he was thinking about it, but he was a good board. Thanks, Alan.
Item number three, First District Association of Local Governments Planning Boards, would be the appointment of Mr. Mike Bartley. Chair would entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Falcon, second by Wyeth. Call a roll.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And number four is appointing Mr. Washi to the Swiftell Advisory Board. Moved by Miller, second by Wyeth. Call a roll.
Krogman, second.
Krogman. Okay. You guys got it hammered out now? Okay.
Yeah.
Please call a roll.
He's quicker than I am.
He's quicker than you. I seen you going to the mic.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We've still got a, I think item, we can take care of Item Number B. Action to approve Resolution fourteen dash fifty-seven. This is a resolution updating the compensation rate for the chairperson and the alternate chairpersons of the Brookings County Board of Mental Illness. Chair would entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That mileage is also set by the judicial system?
For the court-appointed aspect it is. That doesn't mean we have to utilize the mileage, but typically we have been utilizing the court-appointed hourly rate.
Right.
And typically for our chairs and our alternate chairs, there is no mileage, but we're just bringing that to your attention, that that's what the state rate is.
I see. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number C is Action to Approve Delinquent Tax Agreement fourteen dash eighty-two in the amount of twenty-four thirteen ninety-two, which is in your packet. Moved by Miller.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second by, I got a tie, Krogman, okay? Discussion.
Vicki, is this the first, is this the first agreement with this party?
It is, and the only thing different about it is this particular person is over seventy, and we cannot take any tax deed to his property, but through the bank, they want to make payments, and that's great, so hopefully he can get caught up.
Get caught up, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I noticed it was a shorter period of time.
Yeah, and it's, we're working with the bank and this individual both, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Discussion? Please call a roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number D is GIS data request. This is to authorize the release of GIS data to GEO Com Incorporated, as they're an agent of South Dakota 911 Coordination Board.
Move.
Moved by Falcon. Second by Krogman again. Krogman. Discussion.
Yeah, this is just allowing us to release that information without them having to, because they're going to be coming in and doing a whole new statewide data set, and be an opportunity to, they don't have to come and request it at the time they need it, it'll be, it'll be in place that we're going to authorize the release of it, so. Been working on this.
This fits into the next generation or generation, next gen, they call it.
It'll be, all the data, every addressing and everything is going to be in one database, you know, so it can be shared by anybody, so it's quite a system.
And for the citizens here, Brookings County is kind of one of the leaders in as far as the 911 communications and service and being a part of the next gen program that's coming out. Okay, please call a roll.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. We have a scheduled hearing, the second reading, and so at this time, we'll recess as a board and we'll reconvene for the purpose of the hearing. And this is for the second reading of public hearing on Ordnance twenty fourteen dash oh three. This is an ordinance establishing the placement of a four-way stop at the intersection of Thirty-second Street South and Main Avenue. And without objection from those present, we'll dispense with the reading of the ordinance as such and move into the testimony. And at this time, we will hear from anyone in the audience that would like to come forward to the desk and state your name and make any comments that you would like from anyone who is a proponent of this action.
Thank you, I'm Denny Carmichael. I'm the President of the River Ridge Road Conservancy District. On November eleventh, Sheriff Stanway contacted me to see if there would be any input from our development as to whether or not, what their feelings would be on the four-way stop at that intersection. I then sent out an email to fifty-nine residents in River Ridge. Responses from forty-one, forty were very, very positive, and one was, of course, the other way. I then sent these back on November twelfth to Sheriff Stanway, and I think many of you have received copies of this with the concerns of our constituency out there of the safety. And it's not being able to see around the intersection because of maybe a yard fence on the east side, maybe because of overhanging trees on the west side. And then with the school coming in now, there's going to be congestion because of that district, or that River Ridge has gone from when I built there in nineteen ninety, eight houses to fifty-nine, and you can imagine how many children there are now, and it has turned over, and there are smaller children out there coming in every day. So our concern is, Commissioners, that we may as well go ahead and make this a safe intersection now, because probably if we don't today, in five years, we're going to have to address it again. And we have kind of already conditioned people coming from the north and the south to slow down and stop, and we may as well just, in my opinion, put this four ways in and have it a done deal. Any questions to me?
Any questions, Mr. Carmichael? Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else wishing to speak as a proponent?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Nancy Nieber. I live in River Ridge. I'm on the board for the road district out there. I'm an active retired person. I walk and I bicycle just about every day. I just, I'm really, I really feel that since that four-way stop's been put in there, it's a much safer intersection for the reasons that Denny described. Now there is a bike path that's directly across the road from the four-way stop. More people probably will be using that to get into town because the bike path runs directly to that intersection. I think it would be an excellent idea to keep that stop, four-way stop in that area for the safety of all involved. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak as a proponent?
Thank you, I wrote things down because I tend to ramble. My name's Vance Owens, and I live in River Ridge as well. And I don't really have that much to add to what they said, I just am absolut, I just absolutely think the four-way stop should be in place and remain in place as it has been. I'll just read one of my bullet points since they covered the other things. You know, I've seen cars in the ditch on both the east and west sides of the intersection, obviously, especially during bad weather. And in most cases, they're on the east side, having slid through the intersection as they headed down that steep hill. And my daughter was one of those that did that, and I'm, you know, and you could, you could, you could attribute some of that to teenage drivers, but despite that, she ended up in the ditch on the other side, and I'm just very grateful, this is about four or five years ago, I'm just very grateful that there weren't, there wasn't traffic coming through there when she did that. And I know she's not the only one to whom that is, to whom that has occurred. I'm very grateful to have the bike path extended. This will cause more traffic out there, and I think that safety there will be a major concern. And then with the school coming open, I can imagine that it will become more dangerous if the four-way stop were removed and not left in place. So please keep it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Nancy Farrenwald. I too am a resident of River Ridge. I speak as a proponent of the four-way stop for two reasons. First off, public health and safety. I had a non-injury accident at that intersection going east and west. I've also observed accidents at that intersection going north and south. I have lived in that neighborhood for fourteen years, and I think that all of those accidents could have been prevented if that four-way stop had been in place at the time. It's an anticipatory action on our parts to leave the four-way stop in place as the traffic increases, not only because of the school, but because of the move south of housing in Brookings and people increasingly using Thirty-second Street South to reach the Elton exit to the interstate. I'm a proponent of keeping those, the four-way stop.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, Chad Strand. I'm a resident.
Pardon Chad, we couldn't hear your name.
Oh, sorry, Chad Strand.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a resident of River Ridge myself, just moved here since July. I live by Sioux Falls, Valley Springs. There was an intersection at Six Mile Road and Forty-two east of Sioux Falls, they had the same problem. They had multiple accidents, deaths at that intersection because they had only one-way stops. And they put four-way, then they put lights in, and now they put it back to four-way. And when you have a congestion of traffic like that, you need to have some signaling at the intersection to make it safer, and especially now that we have that sidewalk coming down there. I have kids, we lived in Valley Springs, they rode their bikes to school, they already asked me if they can ride their bikes to school, and we have not allowed them because there was no sidewalk. Now they see that sidewalk, they want to ride their bikes to school, and if they come down that intersection with no four-way stop there, you know, that's just a death waiting to happen, so that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Gary Thomas. I'm the Principal at Hillcrest Elementary School, and I'm going to be the Principal of the new school, Dakota Prairie. And it's been an exciting experience working with community members on that, on that new school. I also live River Ridge, so I live straight south as a crow flies, so I like a road directly from my, no, I'm kidding, from, directly to the school, straight, straight, straight north of River Ridge. But I am concerned on a personal and a professional level, I think the really neat part of the construction, the last eight months or so of the new school, is that we've had the four-way stop there to slow people down. Now, I'm not a professional in that area as far as a forty-five, as you go south, you're thirty-five, then you go forty-five, so people trying to speed up and then they have to slow down, so I suppose that's another issue. But I really feel I've lived in River Ridge for ten years now, and my daughter, she just graduated from high school at BHS last year. And as you go down that hill, if you're going on Thirty-second, you come out of River Ridge, you go down that hill on Thirty-second, not only is it very hard to see to the, to the right, to the south, it's very slippery until the county gets out there and puts the gravel on there. So I've even encouraged her to take Western all the way around to get on, what would it be then, Twentieth, to go to school. And that's a very scary intersection for me. It's just, and the gentleman before me mentioned biking and that kind of thing for, for young people. I really feel like it's one of the neatest things that's happened in the last eight months, maybe by accident, for our community. So I really think it's important for safety for our students. I work a lot with the, with the city at Hillcrest on intersections and walkways and those kinds of things, safety for people, not only ADA, but also young students. And sometimes the issue comes up when nobody's been hit yet. Well, you know, I really feel like it's a dangerous intersection, and I really feel like it'd be advantageous for our community, our students, and it'd be nice to have people slow down coming to school from the, from the south for their students. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheila Anderson. I'm also a resident of the River Ridge area, have lived out there for about seven years. I agree with everything that the, my fellow neighbors have mentioned. One other comment that hasn't been made, yes, it has been a conditioning to have a four-way stop there. We aren't used to it. I've actually ran the stop sign twice, and I know that's one of the considerations here, but we are being conditioned and things change, so we'll get used to that stop sign. I think it's important for safety. It's also important at work time, people try to gun across that intersection in the past, and with the additional traffic we potentially will see with the school, I think it's important that that four-way stop remains. Thank you.
My name's John Button. I also live in River Ridge, and I just wanted to voice my support for having the four-way stop out there. I agree with all the comments stated earlier. I also say that, you know, we know that intersections are a dangerous place, and I think having that four-way stop makes that particular intersection safer for the reasons mentioned before. Visibility can be an issue, slick roads can be an issue, and as far as conditioning, as far as getting used to it, I think we're starting to get used to the four-way stop already. I have kind of, that has been the one blessing of having the main street closed for however many months it was. It was nice being able to know that there was no cross-traffic. Felt a lot safer getting across that intersection, so I just wanted to voice my support for the four-way stop.
Are there any other proponents?
My name is Greg Miller. I also live in River Ridge. There are also other, many other developments out that way, so the traffic gets fairly heavy at that intersection, but just one of the things that I've noticed, and I've lived out there for quite a few years, but one of the things I've noticed that in the mornings, I'd meet the school bus coming from the east every morning. And now that we have a four-way stop, they have a chance that they can turn and, and the school bus comes from the east and goes to the south. And without that stop sign, that school bus sits there for a very long time when that traffic is going in the morning. So, anyway, I think that we need to have that as a safety issue, you cannot see, and so just pose that we leave that four-way stop sign in place.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents wish to speak?
Excuse me, my name is Kurt Jensen. I don't live in River Ridge, I live on Western Avenue South, but I'm not in such a hurry that I have to get to town to coffee anymore, but I take my granddaughter sometimes, and I see cars backed up to the west for a quarter of a mile because they can't get across that road. And it isn't if it's gonna, but there's gonna be a bad accident there. I mean, that's, that's a given. So the four-way stop sign makes it safe out there, and I think that's way more important than the time that we spend at the stop sign. So I, I hope you leave the stop signs, they really help the traffic flow out, out there. And I came from Sioux Falls last night, and I see the red flashing lights were on the stop signs, which is really a big help, and I don't think anybody's in that much of a hurry that a minute stop is going to hurt them. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hi, I'm Jim Creasy, also a resident of River Ridge. I agree with everyone that has spoke up here today. There's one exception, and it's our, our driving habits. As people are As people are driving from the south going north into town, they've got the mindset of the rural road. Now with the addition of the new school, more housing out in that end of town, that stop sign just helps them reset their mind frame as to, okay, I'm moving from rural into city. Maybe I gotta pay attention.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Commissioner, do you want any of law enforcement's opinion at this time?
Sure. Okay, we'll have a
I don't know if this is appropriate at this time to
A joint, joint comments, recommendations, okay, it's public, yep.
Thank you, Commissioners. Marty Stannick, Brookings County Sheriff. And just, just some quick background is, of course, the four-way stop signs were, were put in place for the, during the time of the construction of South 77. And when the construction was completed and that was open, the city had contacted me and Jackie Lanning's with me from the engineer's office with the city, and said that they had got comments about leaving the stop signs and asked what, what the county felt. And I says, well, at this particular time, if you're gonna leave the stop sign, it, it makes sense for the county to leave the stop sign on, on our side. And since then, I've felt it was probably good to get some public input on, on those four-way stop signs. And I'd worked with Denny Carmichael before at River Ridge, that he had a lot of vandalism out there and actually that his residents helped, helped capture these people. And it was a quick way to get some comments from the River Ridge people because that's the largest development in, in that particular area. And then also, you know, how do you get other residents involved that, on quick response without going door-to-door, something like that? And that's why we did the, the Redditor did the news. I know there were some comments in the paper about that River Ridge was notified, but the other people weren't notified. And that's why we put an article in the paper, so other ones can be, you know, come and, and do their opinions at this. And that's why we did the, of course, the news article. And, and I agree with everyone that, that has come up here, you know, it's, the crash data there is probably doesn't meet the criteria when you look at the crash data. But the, the comments that we've had, that I've had, is, is the slipperiness of the hill. And I've had residents call me and say that they've had near accidents there with the sliding. So, a lot of those comments to me are justified. And with the increased traffic that, that we're gonna see on that road with the school and stuff, to me, it justifies having that four-way stop sign there. Also, visiting with the police chief, I've had a couple of meetings with him. And he couldn't be here today, but he is also just wants to give his recommendation that he's in favor of the, of continuing the four-way stop sign there.
Okay.
And I don't know if Jackie wants to, she probably has a little more information.
Thank you. I had a few calls during the summer
Please, for the record, Jackie
Jackie Lanning, City Engineer. I had a few calls over the summer from folks appreciating the four-way stop sign. And then we had gotten some requests to keep the four-way stop sign permanently. And, and as Marty said, we met as a, on a staff level to study the issue. When we look at stop signs for the city of Brookings, we use the Manual of Uniform and Traffic Control Devices. The MUTCD manual has been adopted by the city. It's a guide, guidance on signage, stop signs, signals, multitude of traffic control. And so I did write that in, in my packet to Ms. Stephenson. On one of the warrants that could be met for a multi-way stop sign in this case would be, I'll, I'll just read it out loud here for the public. Locations where a road user, after stopping, cannot see conflicting traffic and is not able to negotiate the intersection unless conflicting cross-traffic is also required to stop. And as a group, we felt that warrant would be met in this situation for the east-west vehicles trying to look to the south. On the, on the east side of the intersection, there's a tall fence with some evergreen trees. They've been trimmed, you know, the best that they can into a vertical line, but it's still difficult to see on the, on the east leg. And then on the west leg of 32nd Street South, there's more trees and so forth. So it is difficult to see on the west side as well. And one other criteria that could be met, it, again, this is a kind of a judgment call. I'll read that one out loud too here. It says, "An intersection of two residential neighborhood collector through streets of similar design and operating characteristics where multi-way stop control would improve traffic operational characteristics of the intersection." And just hearing from citizens as the traffic backs up to the east and the west on the two-way stop sign situation, a four-way stop sign may improve the traffic flow during peak times. And so those were two warrants that we felt could be met in this situation. And so we're just bringing those to both the city and the county for discussion. And if you want to approve those, those would be the warrants I would recommend.
You're recommending approval?
Yes, as a staff level.
And then, be it noted by our secretary that Mr. Stanwick spoke on behalf of himself and Mr. Miller, our police chief, in supporting as proponents of the proposal, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I guess, a question for Jackie. I know that the city has tabled this, or is that where it's at at the city level?
Yes, they did table it until the second meeting in January. They wanted to have some traffic counts performed.
Right.
And so we did study those on a peak time from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., but I haven't analyzed them yet.
I guess then the legal question, we all, we only own the control of the stop sign on the south side. So, would, would the ordinance have to have something in there that says this will be installed if the city puts theirs in on the other sides? We don't have a three-way stop? I mean, how do you, how do you, I guess, this legal question?
It's up to you. This ordinance really mirrors the language that I believe the city is gonna be looking at. So, again, they don't have control over all four stops, but they'll have similar language. But it's up to you how specific you want to be.
I'm, I'm prepared when we make the motion to put a contingent on the city passing it because we sure don't need a three-way stop.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure everybody was meaning it.
Okay, let me interject, gentlemen. I think we can call Ms. Lanning up for discussion when we bring it to the table. And we'll conclude her, so, okay. At this point, are there any other proponents? Are there any one in the audience that would like to speak as a proponent?
Carl Farrenwald, speaking as a River Ridge resident, and I'm sorry I arrived late. I'm not sure if this was covered before, but I think aside from the whole traffic count issue, there's the issue of the bike trail that's right there at that intersection and the access to that bike trail with the speed limit going by there at 50 miles an hour. Of course, you know from being downtown, people don't necessarily stop for people in the crosswalk downtown even. And so worried, and especially with children and bikes and whatnot and pedestrians, that the only way to act, that bike trail's on the east side of 77. And so, there's gonna have to be a way for pedestrians and bicycles to cross there safely. So that's a huge issue as well for River Ridge residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak as a proponent? Any other proponents? If not, anyone that would like to speak as an opponent, please come forward.
I'm Paul Moriarty, and I'd like to have, make it a safer intersection. And I think the county should check with the two property owners to see if the trees can be either removed on the east or trimmed higher, and also on the west. I think that would make it a safer intersection. And also, it sounds like the county should sand that road coming down more often. But I'm really concerned that it is, could be a safer intersection by getting the site visibility improved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak as an opponent? Any citizen here present wishing to step forward and speak as an opponent? Seeing none, I will declare the hearing closed. We'll reconvene as a board. And with the board, the chair would accept a positive motion regarding the ordinance.
I move to adopt the ordinance, contingent on the city, if that's what you want to do. Contingent upon the city's approval as well.
Okay, second by Commissioner Weiseth, pardon, Krogman, Commissioner Krogman. Okay, and Commissioner Falcon, I apologize, but we were, we were getting into kind of our discussion. Would you, I'd like to have Jackie come up and ask her a couple of questions if I could.
I think, I mean, I just wanted to, being she was justifying there, I just wanted to ask her that question. I've, I've got it clarified, and I think this carry it covers. I'm not concerned about it.
Are you okay with it? Okay. Is there any other discussion from the board?
Well, yeah, I had the, my always problem with legal, and I called the deputy state's attorney because when I read something in legal terms, is it what I really want? And so I asked her if it does prevent a three-way stop being created. Probably not. But I just want to make it abundantly clear with the contingency that we're not doing this unless the city does it. We're not gonna have a sign there. I did drive out there a couple of times and, because I have no occasion to, other than just on purpose. And everybody was following the law. It looked very safe. I liked the back bike path as a consideration for me. The other thing, I called the school district and talked to Superintendent Roger Degru about the redistricting with the K3. And it hasn't been determined yet, but the primary plan that's going into effect will take students from the south, which would include Western Estates and that area. And there's a lot of kids out there. And the route that many would take would be 32nd and Aurora is going to be going to that school. And so that puts, if you're in Aurora, you're not gonna go to Sixth Street and work your way back up. You're gonna go over to 32nd. And so it's just gonna put a little more traffic out there. I do understand that people, you know, you get a county road or a good road, you kind of like to have the right-of-way. But I think the ideal would be is, and it's too expensive, is to put a red-green flashing, you know, regular like we do on 20th and everything else. And someday that'll probably be that way. But in the meantime, I just think it's a way better situation. The slow, that is the city of Brookings, and it's no longer the country. And so, that's where I'm at.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Miller?
We are growing, and that's a wonderful fact, but we experience the pains along with it. And this is probably one of them. And it, it feels rural out there, but in all actuality, that's where the city limits start. And so, in my opinion, this speed limit needs to be dropped to 35 at that intersection as well as having the four-way stops. And to address Mr. Moriarty's comments, the trees have been trimmed on the east side. If you, if you look up from the fence, the trees are straight up from the fence. And that's because we have asked to do that so that our snowplows could see. Because by the time they could see, our blades were out into the intersection. And so that helped them a little bit. However, there's still a visibility problem there due to the fence. And so I think in good conscience, I think we, if we're looking out for the safety of our Brookings County citizens, and it's not only the River Ridge people, I spoke with people in bridal estates, and we have a lot of developments there. Back on Western, there are developments back there. A lot of people use that intersection. And it, it is gonna get used more because with that bike trail, River Ridge people have been waiting for a bike trail to come out by us for a long, long time. And I know that, that children are going to be using that to get to that new school. And so, feeling those growing pains and in looking for safety, I think this is the best thing that we can do. And people are stopping now. They are conditioned, as was mentioned in some of the proponent testimony. So, in good conscience, I, I would have to vote for it.
Well, when this, this issue first came up, I was probably the one on the board here that felt that you don't put stop signs up just for convenience, for safety, it's for other things that, that come forward. And my thought was, you know, we're putting stop signs out on a rural county road, as Tom mentioned, that, you know, the next stop sign to this is down at Comer's Corner, which is 10 miles or eight miles, you know, you, you don't have any other place to stop. You, you know, you don't, you don't stop a three-way stop down at the Elkton exit, you know. I mean, there's, there's, these things could be put everywhere. But in light of, you know, the fact that, you know, and I think the traffic count and the accidents and things like that maybe are on that borderline of warranting it. But I think the issues today that, you know, the city came to us, they want to put a stop sign in. You know, for us to say, no, we don't want to put one in, I think we're trying to work together on this to make it safe. You know, the comments today, the hill, you know, thinking about that of, you know, icy conditions you come down there, it's gonna be that, gonna be that safety device, I see. You're able to get, if you can't get stopped and slide through the intersection, you've got a chance if someone's not coming at 45 miles an hour. So I guess I, you know, understand that. The other thing, a question I had on the bike path, I see it comes there and it stops. Now, the people from River Ridge, are they, how are they gonna, are they gonna ride on the road until they get to the intersection? I mean, that's kind of dangerous too. I mean, you end up with that whole situation there too. I mean, they're gonna be out there on that road. So I, the bike path is important to me. So the things I wrote down are the hill, the bike path, the city request. You know, but I have had as many people contact me personally opposing putting those signs in than I, as I have had people contact me personally saying, put them in. Not taking from the petition or the signatures we got from River Ridge. I'm just talking about general public, people that maybe live way south or people that just travel that road. So, you know, when this originally came out, my thought was, you know, I need to put a lot of thought into this. But I guess I see, you know, the, the way it's probably gonna go, and I probably will have to support it because of other things that I mentioned, because of the city's request, the hill and the bike path. So, thank you.
Okay. We have successfully talked our way into the next hearing. Mr. Commissioner Krogman.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this also. You know, just to talk to your question about the bike path. We've had discussions over the years of trying to get that bike path out there and where we can bring it in and how it, you know, can get there. You're right, we will have to go on that road to get to the bike path and get down to that intersection. Some of that discussion was maybe extending the bike path into the right-of-way area there. Problem we have there is there's drainage that has to be used in that, and that cannot be used there. And so, we're happy we have the bike path where it's at. And so, I think that's a huge issue for me is the use of that. Having sold real estate out there for a lot of years and lived out there, some of the concerns of people is not being able to ride their bike into town. Now, when they see that there, they're gonna use it. And I think we need to slow that, that traffic down to where they have a chance to get across that street the young, with their bikes are walking. And safety-wise, I think that's an important issue. And I guess stop signs, I'm not a big fan of using stop signs to slow traffic down like we talked about, like in Aurora and that kind of thing. But I, I, I think you need to use stop signs to control the traffic at an intersection. And this is an intersection, and it has limited view in certain areas. And I think that's where, like Sheriff Stanwick said, and Jackie said, it warrants the visibility to have a stop sign there and that kind of thing. And so that's my basis on it there, is that bike path and also limited visibility. Um and then also, like you talked about, uh when you do slide down that, and I've slid down there multiple times, slow as I want to go, I still slide. If somebody's coming forty-five miles an hour doing the speed limit and you slide into it, it's a bad traffic accident. And uh if they have to stop there, they maybe are going twenty-five miles an hour. If they're, if we're still causing an accident, but it hopefully won't be as severe as it could be. And so uh for all those reasons, I'm going to vote for it.
Commissioner Wyeth.
Uh two items, one, you're probably wondering why we have contingency, but I believe the city tabled their motion. Yeah, so I don't know why, but just don't want to get ahead of them. I know the ordinance and we're cooperative, but they did table it, so I don't want them to leave us out hanging. And this is a sidebar, but I've been told, I drive around Brookings because of landmarks, not because of signs, because I've lived here long enough. But Dick, Jack, we got you here. I've been told there's no sign saying this is Maine and Thirty Second. When the county and city get together, who's responsible for having a sign saying where in the heck you're at? Uh, got both of them here. Well, what if we don't and they don't, so then there's no sign. So, I mean, I guess, we got the two entities here. I'd like to have a sign out there for people that don't live in Brookings and are looking for Thirty Second Avenue and Main Avenue.
I I would think there should be signs out there with with uh, I mean, the city should be putting there Twenty Second Avenue, but.
We'll make sure the signs go up. I didn't realize there weren't any, so we'll work with the county and each side will probably pay for their own jurisdiction, but we'll make sure those get up.
There was a sign there during construction, folks or somebody removed it, they just have to put it back up.
I I didn't realize that till just now, so we'll we'll make sure that's taken care of. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
This time without objection, we'll recess and we'll move into a public hearing for uh Resolution fourteen dash fifty-six. This is an action to approve the supplemental budget to the county building fund. And at this time, we would ask for anyone that would like to come to the, speak as a proponent. Is there anyone else? Anyone would like to speak as a proponent? Hearing none, anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Is there anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing, we'll reconvene. The chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution fourteen dash fifty-six.
So moved.
Moved by Miller, second by Krogman. Discussion? Staff comment?
This is for the new building out at the highway shop. We've been paying for the construction costs out of the the county building fund, Fund Three Oh One. This is the amount that we need to supplement in order to get that building paid for. We had budgeted for it in in a previous year, um and then we did, the construction had gotten postponed, so.
Think everyone understands. Please call a roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I think we move on to item number F. This is the action to approve Agreement fourteen dash eighty-three. This is for engineering services with Banner and Associates for replacing of existing structures. Chair would entertain a motion. Moved by Krogman. Second by Miller, discussion.
Dick, these are off of a state pricing that we get from the state on, from the engineering services, correct?
Correct. These are not ones that are on the program, these are.
Right, but I mean, this this amount, this services, it's probably not biddable anyway because it's contractual services, correct? But isn't it on a state bid price?
Oh, certainly, yes, yes.
So you know what the cost is going to be, that's how you come up with this total hours and they.
Correct, and yes.
So you're the one that determined that Banner got this?
Yes.
And how many other engineering firms are on that list?
Uh probably twenty.
And then what brought Banner to the top of the list?
Probably the number one reason is because with the experience and the historical uh knowledge they have of our drainage and water flows and hydrology studies, they can accomplish the the work probably as efficiently as anybody could. Everybody else would have to start from square one.
Are you convinced that they can do it in a timely manner?
Yep, yes.
I I guess the question, is that kind of customary in other counties too, where they have a firm that they use that they just continue to, I mean, you know how their counties do that? I mean, it's just talking to other superintendents, is that kind of the way it's done in other counties too? Or they have a firm that has this information and they continue to do it?
Yeah, I I would say yes, from uh talking from the cuff, but but also it depends upon your environment. If if we were in Lawrence County where we had a grand total of thirty-five bridges and they only come up every so often, you probably wouldn't see a significant savings by one or the other because they would go through the process uh if they hadn't done it before. But in Brookings County where you've got two hundred and twenty-some structures and you've had a significant amount of those structures that need to be addressed on almost a regular basis. For example, last year when we um accomplished the the task of getting the two bridges right north of Bruce combined so they could be done at the same time, one of the things that was of merit in that particular situation was Banner's historical uh knowledge and data that they had at that particular site and allowed them to do both for, you know, they were only charging for the one particular hydrology on the riverside, not the not the other one. So there was a a real good example of where in Brookings County's uh case, Banner, you'd be hard pressed, they're a good firm, you'd be hard pressed to find someone that could um do the quality of work without an additional cost. I I mean, they just couldn't, they'd have to do all the hydraulics and everything from square one.
But you feel comfortable that, I mean, they've got an hourly rate and you feel they put the hours it's going to take and they present a cost to you. I mean, my my question is, you know, if you feel comfortable, you have to bring it to us because I wouldn't know whether this takes twenty hours or two hundred hours.
Right.
I mean, you have to understand that that hours is what makes sense and you bring it to us. And then I don't have a problem with that, but I just, you know, as I say, you know, sometimes you just got to ask questions of, is there other people out there, are we are we locked into something where, you know, is this the right way to continue or are we doing the right thing? It appears we are, so.
Any anyone that gets on that list to be approved by the state of South Dakota, all that does, that eliminates the need to go out for like individual proposals or whatever, which you you could do. However, by being on that list, the state is reviewed and acknowledged that what rates they are charging are acceptable and not extreme. And so therefore, um it it just makes it um kind of a no-brainer from my standpoint that that would be a good choice, would be to choose Banner.
Let me ask you this question. You say they have a significant advantage because they have the hydrology report. That hydrology report is their property and not ours?
I I don't know on a property standpoint, maybe Brad could answer. But one thing that would happen is should another firm take the job, that data is absolutely necessary and they have to obtain that data. They're going to have to go out and do uh physical measurements and and studies to obtain that data. And if they called Banner and said, gee, we've got this bid now, would you mind if we used your your hydrology data? I would be willing to bet that they would probably say, no, thank you, you can obtain it yourself.
The hydrology data is not property of the county, it is the property of the engineering firm that done it.
Right, and it and it'd be no different than, they wouldn't trust if, let's say we had had somebody else do the job in the past, they're not going to take someone else's data and just run with it. I mean, they're going to, they'll want to get their own.
I understand, but you, the only way you could have access to that data is make a request to that firm.
I would, I would say yes. I think even if Banner wanted to give it to somebody else, I think you'd have to have my permission or the county's permission to transfer that.
All right. Any other questions?
And I and I don't have any, I mean, nothing against the firm. I mean, I think you do an excellent job and I'm satisfied with the work. My only, my only concern is that you feel, anytime you you bring these forward, that the amount of hours that are that are there are are right. I mean, you can have a firm that says, I'll do it in ten hours, and they say they'll do it in thirty hours. Well, it isn't what they charge in hours, it's how many hours it takes them. That's my only concern is that you feel comfortable and you must bring it forward. I don't have anything against the firm and continuing to do the way we're doing and just asking the questions.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Call a roll, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number G is action to approve Agreement fourteen eighty-four, an agreement from engineering services with Banner and Associates for structure inspections less than twenty feet with estimated cost not to exceed twelve thousand two hundred. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Krogman, second by Wyeth. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Larson. Oh, Falcon said aye. Sorry, I didn't know what to do there.
You're fine.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number H is action to approve Agreement fourteen dash eighty-five, an agreement for engineering services with Banner and Associates for replacement of existing structure. Uh this one we should note is structure number uh zero six dash one twenty dash one twenty-two dash U in Brookings County with an estimate not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Krogman.
Second.
Second by Wyeth. Discussion? Denny's on the phone, call a roll, please.
Wyeth.
Oh, yah.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller. And Larson.
Aye.
It's okay.
Commissioner Falcon had to.
Once in a while, I guess. That's why I had it first out of the box last time. Forgot the batting order.
Action number I is to approve a sick bank request. Uh this is request number fourteen dash oh three, the document was in, and information was in our packet. Chair would entertain a motion for such.
So moved.
Moved by Miller.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Commissioner Krogman. Discussion.
History here, um you know, we we have a max to to bank up five hundred.
Correct.
And we have three seventy in there and they're requesting two forty.
Yes.
That seems to be a lot in my, I mean, but again, if that's the norm.
That's, we don't get these very often, honestly. And all of the time that I have been involved with being a part of meetings, we've gotten the three requests this year, that's a, I haven't seen one prior to that really. The sick leave bank is something that is completely a hundred percent controlled by this board. We, Laura and I will be looking at setting, presenting a policy for your approval on this. We need to do some more discussions on it. We're also going to let, get some information out to employees who are um either maxed out or, you know, for every, all employees, but especially those who are maxed out or above their sick leave limit, that fourteen forty where they would get it paid out, you know, if and when they leave or retire, um that they could donate hours to the bank because it is getting down. And it's just, it has never, this year it's just gotten used more than it ever has in the past. And I think, you know, people aren't aware that, you know, maybe aren't aware that they can even donate hours. So we'll get that information out. But as far as how it's used, the approval, it's one hundred percent, this board makes those decisions.
Do we, um is there, so there's not a requirement that you have to have given to it to be able to use it or any of that kind of stuff?
No.
Okay.
Is that one of your considerations? I guess I'm not familiar with this process in private industry or in government, but seems like people, staff donate, right?
Correct.
Employees, so is it, as Laura mentioned, that many places, it seems like employees ought to control it. I'm just saying. I mean, they're, but.
Well.
Dennis has got some, I'm I'm not familiar, I'm just asking.
Yeah, my my only concern is, you know, we're getting into this and, you know, and what happens to the employee, the bank is empty. That employee is just out.
You're right.
See, and that's worse to me, you know, if there's going to be some, you know, Family Medical Leave Act extends your employment, protects you, there's certain things you can do. I mean, I don't think we can continue to protect the employees forever. I mean, to the point of, I mean, this request here is quite a few hours to me. That's a long time and that's taking a lot. And I I would say, you know, into the future, the thought should be, there's got to be a maximum you can take out of there. You've got to pay it back. There's got to be things that can be done because, you know, if I if I'm an employee and and somebody beat me by two days and took all the 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 sick leave up, then I had an illness and I wanted it, no, you're out. You you know, because these people are going to continue to be getting paid. These people are going to continue to get benefits. So I think you've got to, you know, into the future, you need to think a little careful about how you want to continue to move forward because it can snowball. And that that's my only concern, not, I mean, I care for the employees, but you can't protect everybody. If you can't protect everybody the same, then you should maybe relook it.
I'm guessing that that's something that you will be looking at in your policy, that you're going to be.
Yes, Laura and I have discussed it and we've discussed, you know, a maximum amount, um getting more information out there. You know, it's in the, it's in the policy manual, employees just, you know, you read it when you start and then you don't tend to look at that sort of thing again. Getting information out to the employees about donating to that bank if they have hours that they'd like to do that. And then, you know, you know, the policy is yours. I mean, setting, you know, like I said, setting that maximum, requiring people to pay a portion of it back or all of it back. Um but when, I I can speak from experience, when you're trying to earn a quantity, especially the amount that's being asked for, that's that takes, that's going to take years and years and years and years of not using any of your leave to return that back. So um maybe a percentage, you know, but.
Then you're going to have those employees that don't have any because they take it all the time.
Yes.
Abusers, per se, I mean, they don't have any built up because they use it.
Might not be that they're abusing, I mean.
No, and I just say there could be some. I'm just saying there could be some. They'd end up in that situation.
I just, I I apologize for my ignorance. I was on the school board for six years and I know they got it, but we didn't have anything like this that would whack it down. But I don't know, I I actually don't know if we limited it or how it worked, but we had some, it's an extreme health issue with some people. And uh we got it taken care of and I honestly can't remember. So I wonder, in your research, probably better with government than private industry, I'm not eliminating that, but um school district, city of Brookings, just what their policy is too. I am going to spend a little more time paying attention, I saw this, I thought it was a lot, but not a great deal of history and so pretty uninformed, Commissioner, and I apologize.
This uh this request uh always come to mind that you have programs and are you using them or abusing them? And the word abuse came into my mind the minute I seen the volume of this request with the maximum hours that are allowed in the in the program. And if you look at the number of hours given and forty-hour work week, this is a long time. And if you look at the number of hours given, and forty-hour work week, this is a long time. And I, I think, I think it's excessive in my mind, grossly excessive.
When I, when I thought of this, you know, I'm wondering, okay, what kinda limitations would we have? Could somebody just ask for all of it, and how do we say no, or what is our number? And I guess what I, my thought came up with was, you know, maybe if we put a policy together that, okay, we have a certain amount, and you can make a request for up to twenty-five percent of the bank. So for example, if you have four hundred hours there, somebody could request twenty-five percent of that, and that'd be like a hundred hours, okay, that would still leave the three hundred, and that kinda thing. And if they got to their, their hundred hours at the end, and they still needed more, they can make an additional request for another twenty-five percent, um, you know, in that way. And that way, you know, we wouldn't be just, we could have some type of a, a policy on it, that what's available and what they're asking for, um, obviously, we don't have that right now, but just food for thought on something like that.
Yep.
Um, and, and twenty-five percent, I have no real reason to say fifty percent, twenty percent, ten percent, but, um, you know, I think this is excessive, uh, for the amount that gets there, um, I don't feel that somebody should have to pay it back, I think it's there for somebody to use, it's a, a donation from the other employees towards somebody that's had, has a hardship, um, but I also think you have to protect that a little bit, um, of the amount of use, and have some type of policy to have that in place, and so, you know, I don't have a problem granting the, this person, um, some leave, but two forty to me is rather excess, excessive, um, I would rather see this person, give, give amount to this person, and then if down the road, we're in the same situation after this, come back and ask again and say, just, I'm, I'm not, I need more time, so.
Are, are you proposing an amendment?
Uh, you know, I, if I use the twenty percent rule, it's at three seventy, um, that's like ninety-two hours, but I mean, we could round it up to a hundred hours or something like that, um, was what I was kinda thinking, but I'm open for other comments.
We can discuss if you wanna make the motion to amend and generate a second.
I would, uh, make a motion to grant this person a one hundred hours.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion?
Well, I, I'm reading this, and a, a medical, uh, certification is required, so I mean, yeah, that's trouble, these are just numbers, and we're talking about a, a person, and we don't know the person's circumstances, that's, and so, I, I don't like our policy, um, and we can definitely look at other things, uh, in the future, but, um, it, it's more than numbers, it's a person, this could be, once you heard, it, it'd be one of those things, if you heard the story, you'd be saying, oh my God, I'll give you the whole thing, you know, or something like that, 'cause I can't believe you wanna come back after two hundred and forty hours, oh, I mean, we don't know the story, um, so, I, I think we got a mistake in our policy. It's great to have something come along, whack you along the side of the head to fix it, but I just not big on changing rules in the middle of the, of a game, just because you're getting beat on a passing attack, you say, well, you can't pass anymore the rest of the game, you know.
Commissioner Falcon?
Well, I think, you know, what Ryan has proposed here is just what he said, is that you put this number down, and if it's just circumstances, there couldn't be, always be another request beyond those hundred, if it, it isn't like that, that's the end gate, but you gotta stop somewhere, and, and the other question is, are these donated sick leave hours, are they coming from people who are maxing out and giving, giving their extra, or are they walking in the door saying, take forty hours of my sick leave away?
Uh, you know, it's been so long, I don't know the last time anyone made a donation even, to be honest with you, um, it, it, it could come from either, I mean, I think people who are at their max are probably more likely to donate hours that, you know, that either they're never, ever going to be able to use, or, you know, because it's the excess over the fourteen forty that they'd get paid out when they wouldn't end up leaving or retiring from the county, but, you know, I, I could, I'm not maxed out, but I could go and, and donate hours.
Sure, but I mean, I think most cases, it's, it's people who have maxed out, are giving, if they're earning twelve hours a month and not using it, it's going into this bank or whatever, you know, and, and that employee's not losing anything, they can't do anything with it anyway, and the other part is that you start giving too many hours, but, and then you gotta replace that employee, because you're short-staffed, so now you're double paying, you just gotta be careful on the whole situation. I think there needs to be a lot more thought put into that, and, and I don't have a problem with a hundred hours starting on this one, and you guys can decide later if it's, if a request comes in.
Uh, I'd be clear on the procedure, we can do a hundred hours now, and that would be, um, you know, a couple of weeks, and then some change, but, and we can do it again, is that right?
They can always make another request, yes.
Okay, further discussion?
No, I, you know, again, I, I understand your comment that there's a person behind that, and there's always, you wanna give as much as you can, but you also have to take a look at the rest of the county employees that have there that, if something comes up, and now this person has used it, and, you know, and, and so, I kinda, at times, have to take that out of the equation and say, okay, this is available, and this is our policy, so, let's do it, and we don't have a policy, so it's tough right now to, to do that, so, um, maybe I'm make, we're making up our own policy here, but this is what I feel comfortable with to start, uh, that still allows that bank to have some, um, some sick, uh, uh, days leave for other employees, if that would come up, another one person would come up, um, and, and it would still leave some there, but it still allows this person to, to get a couple of weeks more, to hopefully heal, and, uh, be able to get back to work, and if it, uh, if this person needs more time, um, and comes back and says, I need another week, okay, I can see that, but, um, we can discuss it then, but, uh, just, it's a lot, so, anyway.
Yes, Commissioner Wysett?
Well, when it comes to management of people, you got the people's side, but you got the legal side, and I hate to dump this on you, so, but, are you comfortable with this motion under our current policy? Yes, please. Sorry, but, yeah, I know your attorney's like a little preparation time, but, and that's fair, and, uh, I'm, I'm sorry to ask that of you at this time, but-
Well, I haven't, I haven't conducted any research on other sick leave policies, or any legal ramifications that surround it, so, you know, at this point, I can't give you a researched opinion, certainly, it's the board's discretion to do what they want, and what Stacy's telling us is that this has been a, a policy that's been strictly governed by the board.
But that, that, that third paragraph kinda gives you a blank check, but I just wanted to make sure that this motion fits our policy, good or bad as it is, this is number three, well, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, we will call a roll on the amendment, does everybody understand the amendment? Okay, please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now we will call a roll on the motion as amended. We first have to pass the amendment.
Good roll call again, we had, this is the amended motion.
You don't have, okay.
Now we have to, now we have to act on the main motion as amended.
Miller?
On the main motion as amended, yes.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried. Sorry, you don't have to do seconds, or motions, or seconds on that, or, it's for the first, okay, okay.
Yep, we had the motion, then we changed it. First, we had to agree on the, on the change, then we had to agree on the package as changed.
Okay, thank you.
Item number J is automatic supplement, this is to automatically supplement the, uh, VCS department, uh, for fourth, forty-three seventy-five for veteran service officers salary supplement, chair would entertain a motion. Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman, discussion, please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item K is automatic supplement, this is to automatically supplement the emergency management department, uh, in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-three for the reimbursement for the morning siren upgrade.
Move to approve.
I'm sorry, motion by Miller, second by Wysett, okay, discussion, call a roll.
Wysett?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number L automatically, uh, supplements, uh, the emergency management department, one thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars four cents for reimbursement for the, uh, SHSP local conference. Moved by Krogman, second by Falcon, call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item M is the action to automatically supplement the emergency management department, uh, two thousand six hundred dollars for reimbursement for the HMEP planning, this is a hazmat, uh, plan.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman, call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number N is our action to approve resolution, uh, fourteen dash fifty-eight, and this is approving contingency transfers for fiscal year two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Moved by Miller? Second by Krogman, discussion. Everybody looks at the transfers.
The only thing in our packet, there was no number on top of the resolution, if that's, makes any difference.
Okay.
Okay.
Please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number O is the transfer of cash from budget line, uh, one oh-one, four twenty-two, one forty-two, ninety-one, in the amount of fifty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars to, uh, fund seven fifty-nine, this is the Brookings County, uh, Fire Trust Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Krogman, second by Wysett, discussion?
This is, you're in-
This is done annually, whatever budget is left in that general fund line, we transfer basically that budget amount in cash over to their, um, their long-term, their fire trust fund, fund seven fifty-nine. We do this every year, so I've been con, in contact with Darrell and made sure that this is the bottom-line amount, and that no more bills are going to be paid out of it, and this is the amount, then that will transfer.
This is a pretty good chunk to build their long-term planning, uh, program, so, okay? Any other discussion, call a roll.
Wysett?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon? Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item P is discussion and possible action to designate funds into the general fund, the unreserved, undesignated fund balance. Chair would entertain a motion for discussion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Miller.
Second for discussion.
Second by Commissioner Krogman.
What are you, what are you making a motion to do?
Oh, okay, you want to discuss, yeah, we probably should discuss.
I think you better discuss this one first, cancel motions.
In your packet, and I can find it here too, let's see.
Surplus analysis, I've got it.
It gave several different options, um, in your packet, on, um, what to designate, this, this one shows where we're at as of, um, December eighteenth, we're at about thirty-five, oops, now I'm really messing things up, I need a mouse, um, we're at about thirty-five and a half percent as of December eighteenth, and that's gonna vary a little bit before the end of the year. But then I also provided in your packet some options on where we'd be if you designated, um, a million dollars, be at about twenty-eight percent, I have it here, twenty-eight point six five percent. If you did seven hundred and fifty thousand, we'd end the year at about thirty percent, thirty point three five. Five hundred thousand, about thirty-two percent, two hundred and fifty, thirty-three, close to thirty-four percent. And this shows you where we've been historically at the end of the year, the last few years. Um, in thirteen, we ended at twenty-eight, twenty-nine, eleven was a little bit lower than that, twenty-three percent.
So, question for you.
This is where we're at right now.
If we were to designate just around numbers, um, like a million dollars, it would come out of that unassigned number, five point two?
Correct, yes.
Okay, um, if you, can you go back to the previous page? Okay, and, and it looks like, do that, we were, come on, three point two and three point one, um, and there's-
Yeah, if you look at the percentages on the left, that's where we ended the year at.
Right, I understand, but I mean, we're, we'd still have four point two left of unassigned, and that would make twenty-eight percent, is that, what, I don't, I'm not, one extra million dollars, and it would still only be twenty-eight percent, what's, what do we increase there, what do we?
If we, if you, if you assign a million dollars, you're gonna be at approximately that twenty-eight point six five percent, approximately, because, I mean, we, this, the first, this is all based off of numbers, as of December eighteenth.
Well, historically, I think in your notes, we ran from twenty-three to twenty-nine.
Correct.
So the million is the number to me, puts us in a safe, I guess, the rest of the discussion, I'm open.
It'll probably be a little bit lower than that, twenty-eight percent, just, like, like I said, you know, we're basing this off of a snapshot in time, which isn't-
Your.
December thirty-first, but, um, and, you know, like I said, I put in there a sign for whatever the board wants to assign.
What's the nu, what's the percentage we have to be under?
Forty.
I guess, uh, the other is, what damage is it, just leave it unassigned? These is flexible, the culverts, emergency road repairs, other economic development opportunity, uh, and from, historically, what is the problem with allowing it to sit out there unassigned?
Well, I think, you know, you want to try to get your percentage down, so you don't risk that forty percent at any time, and I think that if you can designate here, doesn't mean the money's gone either.
No, it's simple motion by the board to, if at any time that percentage gets dips low, you can unassign it by a simple motion of the board to unassign those dollars.
We are so fortunate to be able to do this and talk about this for other counties, or trying to get their percentages up, and we're trying to maintain ours so that we're at a auditing level, and I, you know, I agree with you, the, the million is, is a good figure, and that percentage looks good, and, and just, we have to decide what you wanna do with that million, or have some idea of, of where, I mean, I think we're gonna have a lot of road construction costs that probably, we don't know the numbers yet, that it would be nice for you guys to have that extra money, and just in case things come out higher than anticipated, and then you don't have to say, hold it, now we gotta stop here and see where the money's at.
So where'd you wanna put the million at? We're not putting it at a question mark, so we're gonna put it someplace, which one you wanna put it to?
Whether you add it to that economic development highway, if you can just add it there.
Yeah.
It's there, if you don't use it.
Just, historically, this is a good, when you're in this position, as Commissioner Falcon just said, this is what you do, you put it over into some type of designation, so that you aren't holding all kinds of money with no plan for it.
Right, yeah.
And, and when we put this, when we put this money in there, then the general public looks at our budget, they look what we've done, and they know that, well, they're said, they must have some big road project in mind, or they're, they're interested in infrastructure, or whatever it would be, because they're putting money away into that, because they must anticipate something coming up, and they're getting ready for it.
And that's, that's exactly my point, uh, the same way too, is also the strategic planning, you know?
Yep.
That's gonna go a long ways.
You gotta have money there.
You gotta have money there, and if we have something five or ten years down the road, we can assign that towards that, and whether it's a jail, whether it's a, a juvenile detention center, whatever we have down there, but if we have a, a, a plan of where we're headed to, and we have the ability to put some funds away, I think that's prudent, and also, then if we, it doesn't get spent, except for that project, and I don't, I don't wanna see it unassigned, because everything, then all, everybody say, we got a bunch of money, let's go and do this, and if it's assigned, no, this is assigned for what our, our plan is for the next ten years, uh, what we're gonna need to do, so, um, I don't have a problem putting in economic development, how we approach- So, um, I don't have a problem putting in economic development highway proceeds projects, but, um, I, I would like to see our strategic planning process get finished, so we might be able to itemize it down even more for plans in the future of, of future needs of, of stuff, so.
And I think you can do that. I mean, it's just simple motion by the board. Once we go through that process, and if you can see other areas where you'd rather have that money assigned, if you do, you know, another million, so you're at five point two five in highway, you, it's still in the general fund. It's, it's money, all you have to do is a simple motion by the board to reassign it, basically.
Well, and that's the other thing, too, is, you know, we've got, uh, we're going to get asked down the road here, we have a hospital expansion, and they're going to want the county's input on that, and, uh, and so that'll be a discussion we'll have to have, uh, but, uh, you know, those, those things will start coming up, and those aren't just things that we can just say, okay, here's five thousand dollars out of our budget, you know, we have some larger things that could come up, and so.
Just, um, from experience, uh, I would suggest that, that, um, we've done it in the past, but the proactive approach, um, is that you have some designation, and given the changing times and everything we're going through, and we do know, uh, that we're going to have to do some renovation of detention facilities, uh, to stay ahead of the, the game from, as far as meeting all the titles and, and statutes, state and federal, we have to meet. But by designating a few dollars to that effort, whether you do it now or five years from now, shows the intention and the recognition of the issue, and that you're starting to do something in that regard. And so, uh, in your future budgeting, you may, and you get through your strategic plan, you may want to more infinitely designate some of those dollars to avoid some of those other issues.
Just real quick, um, that, bringing up that point, um, we've talked, uh, you know, I guess that the designation doesn't have to happen today or not, but I would like to see us, um, designate, uh, five hundred thousand dollars towards a four-H. So, we, they know we're committed that we put some money away for them, and, uh, I don't know if that's, do that now or not, but I think that's, we've been talking about a building project, us participating. They're having questions of whether we should, uh, if we're going to do give them any money, if they're on their own, and I think this is exactly what this would be for, just like what Commissioner Larson's saying, is it shows the public, it shows four-H that, okay, we have money designated for you. Whether we spend that on that or there, that's, that's just a, a decision down the road. But, uh, I, I would, wouldn't mind seeing us take five hundred thousand and put it to economic development and five hundred thousand to four-H building fund.
Well, um, Ryan, I think you're on the right track, but it's the wrong place. To me, we need to have a strategic plan, and that's first, and, and, uh, and the fact that the ease by three out of five commissioners moving money around, I'm not dying on the sword for any name, because the three out of the five are really going to spend the money. They're going to move it, they're going to do whatever, but, so I'm, I'm not going to jump up and down or go crazy on any of these locations, because I'll just, yeah, take a million and assign it, and, uh, we've got two new commissioners and three out of five, I think, five hundred thousand for four-H. Marty hasn't been going over there like this or anything, but the sheriff's department, you know, we need to start saving money for a, a new, um, detention center or whatever it is. But I, I guess I'd like to have that discussion of strategic plan first, and then we can start, you know, some of these.
I have to agree with that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Wysett on that, so I, I think that, I would like to make a motion that we move the million and put it in the economic development highway projects line, and we can, we can, uh, get more particular when we're better prepared.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by, by Commissioner Wysett. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I couldn't remember why we had discussion before a motion, but.
Would have been easier if you'd just give me the motion right away when I asked for it. We didn't know what we were going to do. I, I, listening to Commissioners Krogman and Wysett, I think you're both on the right track, and I agree that, uh, uh, my personal opinion as an outgoing commissioner is that we, the monies are there and set aside in a flexible manner by which the future commission can, can operate once they get. And I agree totally with what Commissioner Wysett said, that having a strategic plan in place, and then you can better, better operate. Dennis, were you reaching? Okay. Is any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wysett.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to our reports. Number nine, Commission Department Director Report. Stacy, front center.
I would like to take this time, too, to thank Commissioners Larson and Falcon. I've worked with both of you. I've been with the county for a little over twelve years, and you have been here. Actually, I think Dennis, you came on just after I was hired, and I had worked with you before that at the radio station, so I've known you for a long time, and.
I remember, I remember you, I remember you, and you were sitting back there where Erica's sitting.
In that capacity, so yes, I've been, um, involved with you both, so you will be greatly missed. Your knowledge will be greatly missed, and, uh, just in general, I'll be missing you day in and day out, so. But enjoy your time. Go to the warmth, right, Dennis?
Time.
Just a couple of things, um, from my staff report that the court-appointed attorney's fees, I just put that information that was discussed a little bit earlier. The general fund designations, we just discussed that. I was, I finally did hear back from Rod Fortin with Legislative Audit, um, not about the contract law fund yet. You know, we're going to work on closing that out. I want to get the particulars on that before we take action that we would maybe have to rescind later, so I want to do it right the first time. So I'm still waiting to hear from them on that. As far as, um, designating that money for the county, um, the shop in Sinai, Rod suggested that instead of designating that on the books, creating another general ledger line, he said just keep track of it internally. So I'll be working with Dick on that to make sure we go through, you know, the back budget requests. I know there's seventy, twenty-five thousand was, um, requested in the budget from twenty thirteen. Fifty thousand was requested from twenty fourteen, and another fifty thousand was requested for the fifteen budget. So, um, we'll be finding a way to keep track of that internally, and I'll work with Dick and make sure that we, we know where we're at when the time comes to do that project over in Sinai. Um, and then I did attend the chamber's legislative luncheon. I did leadership brookings, the roundtable discussions, both with the board and with the department heads, Joint Powers Board, and I'm sure, um, Dennis and I will be talking about that. The offices are closed Thursday for New Year's Day. Um, I will be out of the office. I'm going to come in tomorrow and get the packet and things ready for next week, and then I'd be, going to be off probably most of the afternoon tomorrow, so I can be home with my kids who are still on Christmas break, and then I'll be off on Friday, too, uh, just so you know that. My daughter's birthday is Saturday, and we're having a birthday party Friday, so. I know he's in the back room, Jim Sampson. I don't know if he wants to stick his head out here and be introduced. He's our new GIS technician. He started yesterday. I hear him coming. Jim?
Welcome, Jim.
He's back there learning the ropes on how to, how to do these meetings with, with Sean, so wanted to introduce Jim. He's, we've got him on board now, so. Um, other than that, just some upcoming dates, too, for you on your thing. Just a reminder, January twelfth, the Volga Fireman Speed, um, six o'clock social, seven o'clock meal, that's on there. Um, I think that's the only, uh, I guess that's after our next meeting, too, so. Other than that, if you have any questions for me?
Thanks for the reminder about the times and the pitchers and the swearing-in. I see the other two, because.
Yes.
I do get in that eight-thirty and, uh.
It's a little bit earlier on the sixth, so make sure you're here.
Soldier guys need more reminders, Stacy, so.
More reminders?
Keep reminding, yeah.
Keep them, keep them coming, okay.
Or give me some string to put on my thing.
All right.
Thanks, Stacy. Our deputy states attorneys report. Abigail, you got some things for the good of the order this morning?
Just briefly, I also attended the pre-legislative chamber luncheon. I thought we had some good information there. I attended the roundtable for the leadership brookings. Clyde sometimes asks that I fill in for that and just provide some input from our office. And then for the three ongoing commissioners, uh, we will be starting our stats analysis right after the first of the year, and it usually takes us a couple of weeks to compile all of that, but once we do have that organized, Clyde does like to come forward and kind of present that information. So I would anticipate end of January, early February, we'll have all of that compiled. Takes us a little bit of time to put that together. And then finally, again, from, from my office, the State's Attorney's Office, a huge thank you to Commissioner Falcon and Commissioner Larson. Clyde and I often visit about how much, we'll miss you guys and how much work you've done. And for Clyde, I know as someone that's put in a significant amount of time in the public sector, he has such a great deal of respect for the both of you, and we just really are in awe at the time you've put in. And for me, as someone newer with the county, I am just continually inspired and awed by the passion and commitment you have to county government, and it, uh, is certainly something we can all strive to achieve. So thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay. Send our greetings to Clyde and the rest of your staff as well. Dennis, you have? Commission reports. Well, Commissioner Falcon go first today.
Okay, the only meeting that I attended was the Joint Powers Board meeting. I and Ryan were there on the twenty-third. Discussed and went through the issue with the cooler and the heating and the humidity in this building, and it's still being worked on, and we had, uh, ended up hiring a consultant to come up and give us recommendations of what can be done, and I think that's going to be, you know, going to be moving forward. Um, there was another request down in the veteran service area to hang some items, and I don't know if you've had a chance to go over that or whether it's been approved, I mean.
I haven't. With the holidays, we haven't really had a chance to get together.
So you may see some things on the wall down there that, that were, the avenue flags thing that doesn't really belong at the courthouse and more type of things, so anyway, that'll be, uh, that's the kind of the main items that I can remember we had at the meeting. I did bring, I did bring up one thing that I, I'd like to get somebody to do before too long, is that on the front of this building or over on the side of this building, there's a piece of, looks like covering the, the, the footings or whatever, it's kind of folded off and peeled off the side of the building right beside the door. I think it looks terrible. I think it's not a big fix. It's on the outside of the building, not a big fix, but I think somebody needs to take the time this spring to fix that and make it look right, like. Yeah, Jeff took that, so. Anyway, uh, I've enjoyed my twelve years. Uh, worked with some of you longer than others, and I will certainly miss the meetings, uh, but to a point. Uh, missed, missed the meetings that, you know, being involved but not missing the meetings, that I've got to be committed. Uh, just make my life a lot simpler, a lot easier. Uh, like I say, I've enjoyed the time and, you know, the twelve years here, and, uh, you know, thirty years on the police department, it's been a, been a long, long ride, and, uh, so I'm going to take some time, and I, I plan on taking off tomorrow morning, heading south, and, and I think I'm going to end up in Texas and Arizona and wherever, when I run out of diesel fuel, I'll call for a little, call for a little money maybe from somebody, but, uh, anyway, going to, going to retire and, and just, just take it easy, so. Thank you all.
On December sixteenth, I attended the ceremony at the Innovation Campus with the presentation from the governor. On December seventeenth, I went to the legislative update at Swiftel. I always enjoy Dave Owens. On December eighteenth, um, we presented to Leadership Brookings, and they had some good questions. And following that meeting, Commissioner Krogman and I met with a hospital representative regarding their building plans that are coming up. Later that day, I went to the domestic abuse meeting, and, um, our audit report was given to us then, and everything is in order. And that evening, I attended the mayor's celebration. Uh, it was a nice event until he alluded to the fact that the county held the city back because Commissioner Wysett, they had to wait for him to get to his chair for the toast.
I had to get a drink to my wife so she could toast, I mean.
And, um, I thank you for everything you've taught me.
Thank you. Commissioner Krogman?
Just, just so you know, I wasn't texting my friends. Jim Brewer knows he was reappointed.
Okay.
He already got the message.
Okay, well, that's good, so. Um, I think that's it, so gentlemen, it's been a pleasure. I appreciate all your leadership, and, uh, we missed.
Well, you two guys, uh, by the way, Dennis, uh, your foursome said, get the clock. You're late every time you're, for your, so you do need a clock.
Well, somebody has to be last.
On the sixteenth, uh, prior to the certification presentation by the governor, the Board of Growth Partnership met with all the GOED from peer, uh, and the governor, trying to capitalize on the certification process, and, uh, and, uh, I, I think was a good meeting, and we'll have some follow-up here shortly, you know, we'll find out during the legislative season, uh, how that all worked out. It'll be good for Brookings if it does. And then the Swiftel luncheon with the chamber was always interesting with David Owen. Uh, and then we had our leadership. Then a planning and zoning, uh, we had a presentation, uh, by Carla Gatsky from Daktronics about the importance of rural residence, and, uh, we had several proposals. That, I'd say on the, uh, well, first of all, we talked about the, this ordinance that Bob talked about, and, but the primary on the comprehensive plan, a great deal of talk was about rural residences. And, uh, they presented different ways to kind of get the job done or not get the job done, or whatever your opinion was, and I encourage anybody that has interest in. And I encourage anybody that has interest in that. We didn't set a date for the next meeting, but it'll be in January, right, Robert? But it wasn't, we're going to be surveyed on the date?
Yeah, we're discussing that at the January 6 zoning meeting.
Okay, so there'll be another meeting and I, from now on, I guess, especially on rural residences, seem to be the most, 35 acre rule, whatever you want to call it, has a great deal of interest to people. I would encourage you to follow that the best you can. Then went out and made a joke for the mayor. Took an opportunity, my good friend, Mayor Reed. And then we had another growth partnership meeting on the 19th and it was rather long. And we have so many things going, which I can't bring to the table. But I would say was what I like about it now, it is, the last two years being on there, they're becoming more and more spirited. And from spirited discussion comes constructive action. And as long as people keep the personnel out of it, turning over every rock and arguing about which rock we're turning over is an important process. And it was a long meeting. I was going to meet somebody. I said, "I will be out there at 1:30." Well, shot right by that because it was a great meeting for discussion and they're working very hard out there. And then we got our agreement from Sioux Valley. And after 1,000 emails with Scott and Ryan, we've sent letters to landowners pointing out, as you noticed, we didn't advertise for bids yesterday. And Scott, maybe you want to come and address the progress of our project and some of the proposals that you and Stacy and some of us have talked about.
How's everybody doing today? Um, back to the project. It was, we got the advertisement sent off to Stacy in time to advertise for yesterday. But then when the agreement came across, Mr. Weisseth asked me to look at it and, and see what we thought of that then. And with the, how do I want to say this? We were looking at maybe having to delay the bid opening. So, I, what I did was to figure out what day we might want to choose, I talked to one of our local contractors, which is Boz Construction, and asked them, "What would work for you guys?" Knowing that they'll be in Deadwood for a week, they'll be in Florida for a week, and just asked them, "What date worked for them?" And the date that they chose, or they said would work best for them, was first or second week in February. So, with that in mind, then we were looking at how we can look at the $20,000 that Sioux Valley had in there for, for moving two junction boxes, for relocating one pole at an intersection. And that's when I suggested, "Well, maybe we should look at redoing that intersection so we don't have to move that pole." And that intersection is basically 20th Street South. And right now, as it sits, the design was putting in turning lanes for future expansion. Well, that's going to require Sioux Valley to move a pole. And right now, if you look at that, there's nothing there. If you turn, if you're heading west, you're, you're, it's a field entrance, basically, because you're going to run into the interstate right now. Until they can actually get to where they would put in a overpass or whatever their, whatever we do at that intersection, I think is going to get completely changed with the overpass comes in. So then the thought was, "Well, maybe we should relook at how I have that intersection designed and maybe we can eliminate some costs of having that pole moved." Because Sioux Valley's got a pole in the southwest corner, BMU's got one in the northeast corner that they won't be able to move there. So, they're going to want guardrails to help protect that pole there. So, that's when I suggested to Mr. Weisseth, "Maybe we should look at redoing that intersection." And we're up for discussion now. It wouldn't take much to redesign it. I mean, right now, it, my feeling is if we, if the overpass ever comes in, in that area, whatever we do in that intersection now is going to get changed. Just because I don't know what they're going to do in five years or 10 years if that comes in. So, giving them a big enough radiuses to have turning there, they may change that completely. So, my feeling is whatever we design now is going to get changed if that ever happens. So, we could easily just match into the existing roads that are already there and shorten the radius points to where Sioux Valley won't have to move that pole. BMU won't need to have the guardrail to protect their pole. We can save some costs that way. That's kind of where we're at on that situation.
Well, Ryan and I could only take this project so far. And then when you guys have to jump in and throw your two cents worth, and this would be one of them right here.
Well, I'm going to start out by saying that I can't even express my frustration with the delays in this project. We are no further today than we were a year ago on this project. I was promised that this would happen by the middle of January. And now, here we are backed up again. I am frustrated to the max. And part of this, my frustration comes from the fact that the documentation was not given to Sioux Valley, although they took their time, but the documentation was not given to them in a timely manner. And here we sit, now we're backing this up another month. How many more months are we going to be backed up? I am frustrated to the maximum. And so, if, if we have to redesign this intersection at 20th, so be it. Let's get this out to bids.
Well, I guess in any project, things happen and I understand, you know, sometimes you just, I, I, you know, I would just assume that we've got this bidding done early enough and get good bids and just like we talked about, you know. But I guess, you know, if you, if things don't line up, they don't line up. And I, and I, there's a lot of people we can point fingers at and blame. Bottom line is it can't be done until that gets redesigned now. And what happens with the notice that you sent out for bids? Did you, did you contact everybody and say, "Cancel, don't put your bid in?" Or?
Well, we haven't, we haven't sent, I sent the advertisement to Stacy and then that's when...
Oh, you didn't publish it?
We haven't published it.
We stopped it.
Okay, that's good, that's good, that's good. And I guess, you know, yeah. And the other thing, I guess I feel better about and leaving here, it better be done in '15. I mean, you know, this is something that's, that we've got budgeted and we put together and, you know, I hope this delay doesn't kick us out of the, you know, it shouldn't.
Well, it shouldn't. And, and the only reason for the delay is when I talked with Jason Boz, he is a property owner out there. And he had more concerns with not knowing what's going to happen with the right-of-way and the easement than he did anything else. And, and, and I think that is the reason we were looking at delaying the, the advertisement was to get the easement and all that portion figured out.
Well, I have confidence it'll get done. It's just too bad that we couldn't be moving along as what we planned on it.
Ryan?
Yeah. And, and one of the things too is we have to, you know, we have to purchase them right-of-way and easement. And that's part of the deal with Sioux Valley. And we need to get our contract with Sioux Valley put together and done before we can go and in good faith negotiate with landowners. And that is where we're at. So, if we can get that done, we can, we can know what we need to come up with and what we need to do. And we'll talk about that here soon. But Dick will, we'll send Dick out right-of-way to try to get that secured and negotiate and see if we can get the right-of-way taken care of. But we just, we couldn't start skipping steps in good faith and do that. It wouldn't be prudent for us to start negotiating with landowners when we didn't even know what we needed for a right-of-way or what we were agreed to. So, I, I think we'll still be fine. I think we're still in a bid process at time that's going to be competitive beginning of the year and, and that kind of thing. But we need to make sure we're doing it right. I'm still confident we're, we're going to get it done. I think we do need to redesign if, if there, but like I said, I don't want it to take a month for the redesign. I, I want it to be done as soon as possible and that kind of stuff. And so, but, you know, we're getting there and we will get there, so.
I guess, I guess, I certainly share Commissioner Miller's frustration over this project. At the same time, I sincerely want to thank Commissioners Weisseth and Krogman for all of the work they've put in on keeping this project moving forward to the best of their abilities. Pointing fingers really doesn't get us very far, with the exception that probably if you're going to point a finger, look in the mirror and point it. So, I, I think it's utterly important that we understand that, I listened to the report today and all of a sudden, it's just like somebody's out there at night setting in poles that we didn't recognize that were there a year ago. But this is an important project. We've committed to it and it needs to be done as soon as possible. And I'm disappointed that we're not going to meet that deadline. And I'm just afraid that if I was a bidding man, February 15th may not do it either. That's my problem. And, but I once again want to express my deep appreciation to Commissioners Weisseth and Krogman. Okay, that's my comment.
Well, thanks. But on this redesign, Scott, I'm taking it that when and if the 20th Street, we could have elevation changes, we could have all kinds of things. Would it be prudent to redesign this? Shouldn't we just stick with the plan? We've got a road to nowhere right now.
We got a road to nowhere. The redesign is just taking the 50-foot radius that gives everybody a nice turning lane and just going back to a normal, what's out there. Right now, it's a field approach to...
Minor?
It's minor.
Yeah. Well, I guess I, I'm hearing at least a couple that that's what they want to do there. So, and what was the advertising bid opening scheduled then that we finally? What do you think?
When we know when the bid opening will be, we have to publish the advertisement not less than 10 days prior to the bid opening and then one other time in between there. So, it has to be published twice, but not less than 10 days. The first not less than 10 days before the bid opening. So, if we're going to be publishing the first part of February, we're going to look at advertising the end of January. You have to look at those couple of weeks before.
Mm-hmm. One question, not being in the road business and getting bids, I'm always an extremely cheap person, always try to get the best bidding climate. Dick, Scott, do you have any opinion as to drop dead date? I mean, something that we really should strive for to get this job done? I did see a construction person and, and I asked them, they weren't, didn't think this February would be a problem, being a very good bid climate.
And that's what Boz's comment was, was having it the first or second week in February still gets you in there before the DOT lets out a lot of their projects. So... I think by getting it in by the first, having a bid opening the first week, second week of February, we'll still be doing okay for bids.
Well, we'll go with that information and we'll have to probably at the 6th or set our timetable based upon the things we need to get wrapped up here. And speaking of Sioux Valley, on 2/15, you know, we met out there with Jim. There is a pole there that has to be moved, isn't there, to straighten that road out, take that curve out? Is that yes or no? Dick didn't think so? You kind of thought so?
Not, not to straighten out the road. The pole that they want to relocate and move south is due just to the wide radiuses for turning.
But that wasn't in the, on 2/15, the very last, that'd be 32nd Avenue, the very last part, the southern edge. Is there a pole? And I didn't see that in the agreement.
That's in the right-of-way, so that one's their nickel, to move that one. So, the, the cost that they, they provided in that agreement that they sent was for moving the two junction boxes away from the, right now, they're at the fence, so they're going to have to move them back that 7, 10 feet to get it out of the right-of-way like they like it. The other one was at 20th Street South, and that's the pole they want to move 30 feet south to avoid that 50-foot radius that we got in there that we're talking about changing. And the other cost is the two poles on the north and south side of the railroad tracks. And that's where, when I talked with Sioux Valley afterwards, they, that's where the majority of that $20,000 cost is going to come from. And they're said, "If you can change the two foot of fill that you're going to put in there, then that cost will go down." And I looked at that this morning and I think there's things that we can do at that, at the railroad where they're going to have to basically, right now, what they got to do is they got to pull them poles, raise them up and reset them because of the amount of fill coming in to make the railroad grade work. And that, that's where the cost is coming into that $20,000.
Okay, and then the other one is the railroad. The grant, the right-of-way and everything, how are we, how are we doing on all that?
We got names. We talked with Kerry Brech and, and he gave us guys to talk to. Haven't talked to them yet because of the holiday season. So, first thing on our list when we get back from vacation is to be chatting with these guys. Because right now, our six weeks is, we're at our six weeks. So, we should be able to figure out where we're at with the right-of-way stuff.
And the grant just floats out there, the two federal agencies that were looking at it, is that still just out there? Nothing happens in Washington during...
The last conversation that we've had with Susan Tracy with the DOT, part of our design is designing a pad for that control building for them arms. And that's, that's in the plans and so, so as far as I know, and I haven't chatted with anybody because of the holiday seasons to bring you up to speed, but that's what they, that was our last request that they needed. So, everything is still going forward with the crossing arms.
Well, at any point that you feel this commission needs to take direct action with Susan Tracy or whatever federal agency, please let us know.
I will let you know.
We've already been there. We discussed that two weeks ago, that the squeaky wheel gets oiled and that you needed to talk to the railroad people as soon as possible. And now, we're two weeks later and still haven't. It wasn't holidays two weeks ago. Please, please get on that.
Do we need anything else from us at this point?
Not at this point.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
That's my commission report.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Scott. Okay, Ryan, that's your, that's the end of your report too? You guys are done, huh? Okay. I didn't have any meetings, so nothing really to report. It's been a lot of fun working with you guys and all of our staff, all of our other electeds. And I think we've come a long ways and done a lot of things, but I, the greatest disappointment I have as being a commissioner is the fact that I was never able to get the general public to understand that county commission is their most important level of government. For some reason, state, federal gets all the attention and yet county government nationwide is where it all takes place. And I don't know why, but you have not, and I've tried so hard, but that's my, that's my failure as a commissioner, is not able to get the general public to understand how important we are. Now, the successes are all of the things in, not only this building and the technology and all the other things, but I think one of the greatest successes is you discover that longer you're on a board, you actually become a family. And we didn't have a family when I came on this board. And we worked hard, my previous, my predecessors, and Marty, you alluded a little to it today. And Marty, you alluded a little to it today, just like any family, you don't get along all the time. You have your discussions, you have your arguments, you have your fights. But at the end of the day, you're still a part of a family. You'll discover, you commissioners, in the future, you get involved at the state and national level, you too will get to know those people. And you've got all the same concerns, you're all working for the good of the people and the same issues. And you become a part of that state family, just like you do in the other organizations. Nationally, it's the same way. And I'm fortunate and I really love, and I know Ryan's got a busy, busy schedule and he can't this year probably, but I'd like at least Tom, if he could, attend the Ledge Conference in DC and get a taste of what the national can do for you. Or Stephanie, either one of you two, are you going, Steph, this year? And then you get to find out what the NACO family is all about. So, I really, really enjoyed that, but that's probably the greatest accomplishment we have is we've become a team countywide, all the electeds, all the staff people. And that's, that's the greatest part. So, with that, we are, we do have an executive session for personnel and contractual purposes and there will be no action taken after the conclusion of the executive session. So, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for those reasons. Moved by Miller, second by Krogman. And please call the roll.
Falcon, Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, we'll give a couple minute break for Mr. Wyeth.